Good morning, everyone. I'd like to call the order. December 10th, 2019, County Council Meeting. It's 9:00 a.m. I'd like to start my meeting and put in the lead with a flag. Let me do this.
The flag of the United States of America and into the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Has the agenda been posted?
Yes.
Oh, I did that wrong. Roll call, please.
Ms. Alexander.
Here.
Mr. Ballard.
Here.
Ms. Bledsoe.
Ms. Chambers.
Here.
Ms. Lassiter.
Ms. Piper.
Here.
Ms. Quakebush.
Here.
Mr. Hughes.
Here.
Now, the agenda's been posted. I need a favorable approval of the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Jessica. Second by Scott. Roll call, please.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Ms. Alexander.
Yes.
Ms. Quakebush.
Yes.
The approval of the minutes is going to be postponed until the January meeting. For some reason, a little feller in the computer didn't send it to us. Denise couldn't figure it out. She still hasn't figured it out. She thinks she got it to us this morning, but no one's had a chance to look at the minutes. We'll move that on to January. Now, I'd like to turn the meeting over to Mrs. Patterson. She has a comment first about our cost of borrowing money, and then she'll do the transfers and then financial for the edit.
Okay, so last Thursday, I paid off our loan at the bank, which this year we only borrowed $350,000 compared to $1,003,000 last year. And the interest that was paid was only $5,288 compared to $17,347 last year. So just wanted to let you know that it's paid off and hopefully, hopefully we won't have to borrow it next year. I got the $17,820 notices yesterday on next year's budget already, which is early. Couldn't believe it, but at the time, I had you guys go in over the max. I don't remember right now what it was.
I think so.
And so they ended up, they cut $142,000, which now, after they made adjustments and everything, all budgets were approved, but county general ended up with a $5,103,000 operating balance.
Say it again, please.
$5,103,000. At least, but it was. So the budgets all looked really good. So I'm gonna go, after the meeting, I'm gonna go down, go through, just double check some stuff, and then have to sign it and send it back. So that's all that.
And County Council appreciates everyone's help on this.
Good job.
It's been a long haul, about a 10-year run trying to get things back in order. So appreciate everyone's help on that.
That'll be the first year, not how many years if we don't borrow it from the bank. But honestly, looking like we're not going to for the rest of the year.
Donna, when I first came to office-
It was on some circumstances, but-
We were borrowing from the reassessment. I think we borrowed something, somewhere along. And we're still borrowing from our rainy day fund.
Right, I haven't paid that back yet.
We paid it back at the end of the year.
But I'm just waiting on settlement to get done, and I'll pay that back next. And we'll still have to, probably in January, ask Mr. Hughes to go ahead and draw up the resolution, just like every year, to borrow the $500,000. And hopefully not have to borrow the whole thing, but at least it'll be there in case we get in a pinch and we gotta go ahead and borrow it. But I'll pay that back next week when we do settlement. Everything will be done.
Good, thank you.
Okay, which one will move first?
Let's do the transfers.
Okay. Clerk, I'm only, I'm not gonna read any of those zeros, because those would draw-
No, fine.
Well, I should say 198 part-time, minus $4,700. 130 voter registration clerk, plus $1,200. 131 voter registration clerk, plus $3,500. Total request zero.
Ms. Tepra.
Second.
Moved by Jessica, second by Ryan.
Larry.
What? I didn't know you ruled there, I'm sorry.
Yeah. I was thinking, oh, you're on.
You did, didn't you? I'm sorry.
We'll let Ryan do the next.
Okay. Any questions? Roll call.
Ms. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Ms. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Quakebush.
Yes. Oh, Mr. Fanger, you wanna just explain what's happening, so people will know this is part of the budget.
Absolutely. This was part of the adjustment that we made for the 2020 budget. We have removed three pay lines, eliminated three employees. We, the two pay numbers that you're putting money into is to pay them out the end of 2019, because there are no pay lines for them in 2020. And then one of the employees, we have made a lateral transfer into the court. Still eliminating three pay lines, but we kept one employee. She even had to take pay cuts, still with such, we offered out 50% of it, so.
That's an existing pay line.
That's an existing pay line and an existing employee. None of them.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Circuit Court, 114 bailiff, minus 125. D-137, Assistant Reporter, minus 900. D-147, Secretary, minus 2,900. 155 Probation Officer, minus 2,160. 160 Probation Officer, minus 6,650. A-168 Court Reporter, minus 525. 191 Probation Officer, minus 260. 441 Office Equipment, plus $13,520. 181 Judge Proceum, minus 1,380. 185 Transcripts, minus 550. 211 Office Supplies, minus 2,500. 397 Headed Jurors, 4,350. Total Request Zero.
Ms. Tepra.
Second.
Jessica, second by Ryan. Emily and I spoke a little bit about this. The Finance Committee was having a little bit of a problem how to handle this because of the office equipment. And she assured me, and I'll let her tell you what she do.
Good morning, Emily Anderson, Court Administrator. So we waited till the end of the year just to make sure we had enough money for jury trials, and we do have several jury trials scheduled and going. So as you see, we transferred a little bit of that money into jury trials, but we do have enough money to cover that. And then this is a lot of our extra money out of our salary line items. We had, if you remember, we had people that retired out of probation, and we also helped the PD with that money. We want to replace our furniture, our desks. We have the same desk as what we started with, and we don't usually have the opportunity to replace furniture. So what I've done is I got with Thomas Business Center, and it's the same size as the desks we currently have, and have lifetime warranties. We went in and we went out to the new facility yesterday, and actually, the space that we're going into is bigger than the space we currently have. So we made sure that the desks aren't any bigger than what we currently have, and we went back to the offices yesterday and just double checked. So everything will fit nicely in the new space as well as what we have now. So what I get to do with the money I have is replace Circuit 2, 3, 4, and 5. That's 16 desks this year. And then hopefully, as the next few years go by, is replace as many as I can each year. If, even if it's one desk per year, that's what I'm gonna try and do. So that leaves me with Circuit 1, My Office and Juvenile Court, which is 3, 6, 9 desks left to outfit. So this was just a good opportunity to get a bulk replacement.
Any questions? Roll call, please.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Ms. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Quakebush.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks. EMS, B-118, minus $12,409. 196, that should say overtime, not part-time, that was my error. Plus $12,409.45. C-181, minus $13,434.34. 196, that also should say overtime. Plus $13,434.34. Total Request Zero.
Ms. Tepra.
Second.
Jessica.
And Ryan, one.
Second by Ryan. We beat you. Okay, any questions on this? Do you have anything, do you have to chase him to say?
No, I, it is overtime rather than part-time. We haven't utilized any part-time in quite some time. And we have three openings that we have not been filling, which has caused a little bit of this overtime as well as covering special events. The good news about the special events is that we will eventually get that money back, and it goes into our reimbursement fund. So you will get a good portion of this back when Ball State settles with us after football season and then basketball season, so.
Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Ms. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Quakebush.
Yes.
Public Defender, 313. Psychological Testing, minus $2,000. 326 Investigation Fees, minus $3,500. 399 Court Interpreters, minus $1,500. 186 Attorney Fees, plus $7,000. Total Request Zero.
Ms. Tepra.
Second.
Jessica, second by Scott. Do you wanna explain to him what you're doing here? She and Donna called me on the phone, told me what was going on, and go ahead.
Hi, Shelley Harvey, Office Manager of the Public Defender's Office. We, at the end of the year, we have had to hire a lot of, this is for, that was for the add-on, addendum run that we were talking about.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
I apologize. The, at the end of the year, we had to hire a lot of outside counsel. These are, this is actually for trials that came up, that we had to hire outside counsel on, and we had quite a bit of money left in that line.
Is this, right? Is this lawyers and nurses?
Yes, yes, yes. And so we're just trying to get everybody paid by the end of the year, so we don't have to encumber anything. I think you may be looking at that transcript list.
It's non-capital compensation paid to lawyers.
Okay, then that is it.
2, 4, 6, 8, 10, 12, 14, 18, 20, 22, 24, 20, looks like 28 cases. Highest one was $12,000. Lowest one looks like it was $10,000. There's a lot of them in between there.
Yes.
Okay, questions? Roll call, please.
Ms. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Ms. Quakebush.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sheriff, B-128 Deputy, minus $1,593. D-128 Deputy, plus $1,593. Total Request Zero.
Ms. Tepra.
Second.
Move by Larry, second by Jessica. Questions on Sheriff? Able-bodied assistant. Chip, while you're there, I assume that this, the deputy that you hired is the one you mentioned in your newsletter. I like that newsletter. I just sent it to us, thank you. You send it to all employees, I assume, right? That's all, Commissioner, Mayor Board.
I guess it goes out to all your people.
All of our people and all the current employees.
Yep, keep it out, I like it.
Ms. Tepra, yeah.
Roll call.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Ms. Alexander.
Yes.
Ms. Quakebush.
Yes.
Jail, 224 inmates, minus, or plus $3,403.71 contracts, minus $3,400. Total Request Zero.
Ms. Tepra.
Move by Jessica.
Second.
Second by Larry.
Right.
Ryan.
I thought we were gonna do all the Sheriff stuff. I thought you did all the Sheriff stuff.
No, I don't, no.
Okay, I'll be all right.
I'm gonna do the second, the next one, Ryan's already got this one. Whatever.
I do have an excuse. The doctor told me I had an unusual amount of wax in my ears.
What?
I don't hear it.
That might bring up the home, but this is, I might try that.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Ms. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Quakebush.
Yes.
Hume Bridge, with 160 overtime, plus $20,000.
Nancy had a question.
That's what the sheriff was up for. We actually had, after all of this had to be turned into everyone, we had bills that came in. I have money in another account, but it is on a 300 level account, but I need to move to a 400 level account. I know that it's not normal to make a request, but we need to outfit the work for our vehicles, and I have money sitting in vehicle maintenance that I had moved in there from overtime. That if we are given that opportunity, we can go ahead and move that over to our equipment line on the 441 side, and we can have all of our vehicles outfitted that, that we got by the end of the year.
I have a question for the auditor, 300 to 400.
Which, they have to have council approval. She emailed us like four o'clock last night, and it was too late putting off an addendum. So since it's just a transfer, you can approve it today. We just better come up and see what you guys said. We'll have to add it. It would be taking from line 223 Vehicle Maintenance, I think it was $17,777, to Machine Rean Equipment, 441 Equipment, $17,777. So it'd be zero, is what I'm asking for.
What's the pleasure of the council? Motion to approve a transfer of $17,000.
I'll make a motion to approve $17,000?
$777.
$777?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Second.
Second by Jessica. Roll call.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Ms. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Quakebush.
Yes.
Can you go over those transfer, do you have the transfer numbers?
Yeah, it's Sheriff, Sheriff, 223 Vehicle Maintenance, minus 1, minus $17,777, into 441 Sheriff Equipment, plus $17,777.
And you'll send us an addendum of the end of the year?
Denise, can I? Yes, Sheriff. Please, I can give you, this is one. I did prepare it, just in case. You want me to give you that?
Yeah, that's fine. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, Hume Bridge, 160 overtime, plus $20,000. 221 Gasoline, minus $20,000. Total Request Zero.
Ms. Tepra.
Second.
Move by Jessica, second by Larry. Comments? I, we talked about this in finance, this is just to be prepared for the-
Correct.
Possible upcoming bad weather, correct?
Yes, we think we have enough to get us through the end of the year, but Mother Nature could prove us wrong.
Can't control it, yeah. Okay, roll call.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Ms. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Quakebush.
Yes.
Highway, A-1, oh, no, I'm sorry, 160 overtime, plus $40,000. A-130, minus $4,308. B-130, plus $4,308. 170 part-time, minus $40,000. Total Request Zero.
Ms. Tepra.
Second.
Move by Jessica, second by Scott.
This again is just for the overtime, just in case we need it. And then we had a truck driver that moved into a mechanic's spot, so that is opening up a truck driver's position.
Okay, any other questions? Roll call, please.
Ms. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Ms. Quakebush.
Yes.
Public Defender Supplemental, 323 Story Fees, minus $250. 314 Witness Fees, minus $2,000. 186 Attorney Fees, plus $1,250. 312, plus $550. 184 File Maintenance, minus $550. Total Request Zero.
Ms. Tepra.
Second.
Jessica, second by Scott. Questions?
Shelley Harvey, Office Manager of Public Defender's Office. We had a last-minute transcript. The court reporters have to do transcripts for the appeals. Last-minute, high-dollar transcript, those $2,600 and some. I had some left in the line item. We needed to get her paid by the end of the year.
This is attorney fees.
No, you're ahead.
Oh, this is attorney fees, I'm sorry.
I haven't gotten it yet.
Oh, I'm sorry, we are not at the addendum. This is safe things. We're trying to pay, we are trying to pay attorney fees for people who, these are our two attorneys who have done transcripts, or who have done appeals. They finished their appeals. We're trying to get them paid by the end of the year, and that will pretty much wipe out our attorney fees to the dollar. I just moved enough money over. I have both bills from them, and so we're just waiting to get this approval, so we can get them paid out by the end of the year also. I apologize.
Don't apologize. We know that you read our letter. Not carrying it over, and we appreciate that. We know at least one person read it now. Roll call, please.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Ms. Alexander.
Yes.
Ms. Quakebush.
Yes, you wanna go ahead and do her addendum while she's-
Yeah, the statewide 911's been withdrawn, because that's a G and R transfer.
All right.
So then, Public Defender, 211 Office Supplies, minus $1,500. 185 Transcript Fees, plus $1,500. Total Request Zero.
This is the one where-
Ms. Tepra.
Second.
Jessica, second by Scott.
Where we have a employee, a court reporter, retiring at the end of the year, I had enough money to pay her partial for her transcript, but that was gonna get a little sticky with her retiring at the end of the year, plus it was gonna be an encumbrance. So I went ahead and found some money to pay her, so we can get all that money on her last pay and have that taken care of.
Ms. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Ms. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Quakebush.
Yes.
Okay, we're ready for-
Larry Vicki's.
Oh, any more financial, no worries.
Oh, yeah, we've got that.
Oh, I forgot about that.
We've got an edit thingy.
Yep, actually, I forgot, I did, I'm sorry. Edit, 300 Edit Projects, $2,500,000. Total Request, $2,500,000.
Ms. Tepra.
Second.
I think that was the tie.
It wasn't.
That was the tie.
Move by Jessica. I haven't found the card thing yet. I got it somewhere. Anyway, I don't think everybody's aware of what this is.
Yeah, hold bills right now.
You gotta pay the bills and edit as dudes. Roll call.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Ms. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Quakebush.
Yes.
Okay, now we're done.
Well, I did what, let's give it to Ryan, his, in his first year.
Yeah.
Makes me feel this emotion. If you would, sir.
Mr. President, I'm moved to approve transfers in the financial agenda and amend the salary ordinance with life reductions.
Second.
Now you got Larry and Ryan on that other front.
Get Larry, you're the best. Good, thank you.
That's good.
Roll call.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
And Ms. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Ms. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Quakebush.
Yes.
Okay, now then, we're ready for council board appointments, and I asked Scott and Jessica to review and call the folks on the various boards, and so I'm gonna turn this over to Scott and Jessica to make their report.
Yeah, we, we worked on this and called all the appointments that were up and the others, it weren't just to verify on that. There were not very many changes. There were not very many changes, mostly these are reappointments on there. We believe we have correct expiration dates on these, but there are some conflicting between some of the different lists that we're going to try and get to sometime after first of the year. The only question I have on this, there was some discussion on the fair board ex officio. We've traditionally appointed Ted on there, but that's not actually an official appointment on there. He's, I guess we want to leave it up to the council on whether we want to go ahead and take that out and make these official, this the official list of appointments, or if we want to continue to keep that in. And otherwise, we'll need a motion to approve, approve these appointments unless there's any, well, we need a motion before we can have questions, so.
You making the motion approved, as presented?
Motion made.
Thanks. That was Ryan.
Second.
Second by Scott. And we'll have questions.
I guess the only question on there is, do we want to remove that as a, make that not an official appointment and take it off of this list going forward, or do we want to keep that on?
Which ones?
The fair ex officio.
Oh, we said it there.
I think the commissioners have one too, correct? Ex officio, I mean.
Yeah, we have a commissioner that serves over.
I know, but don't they have an ex officio appointment as well, is what I was asking? I can't, I don't.
I can't read them.
I thought we did at one time back in the day, but.
We've always put it on there, but if you wanted off, it could be off.
This kind of became.
We just have a commissioner that comes, I don't think we have.
I thought we always had an ex officio, except, yeah.
We do for council, though.
It doesn't matter.
If we do, they never come. If we, if commissioners do, they never come.
No, Ted's, Ted's been there.
As an ex officio?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
The history of this is, is that when the commissioners at the time created the fair board members, they didn't put any appointments from the county council, and Ted had served on the county council about half his life, I think. So we just took it upon ourselves as council to appoint him ex officio, and now it's kind of become a tradition as much as anything. Scott is right, it's not an official appointment from the point of view of any bylaws or resolutions, it's just something the council did, mostly in respect to Ted.
He's not going to remember.
Right, exactly, but I mean, like I say, we've always, Teddy does a lot, Ted still works.
Yep.
I mean, I just say leave it there.
They come to the meetings and shows up and helps with affairs.
Yeah, he's always up.
And the years I've been president, he always calls me the first of the year and says, the thing you want me to do, boss, or say.
He can call anytime now, used to, if the free minutes happened at nine o'clock afterwards, they'd always call you nine oh one.
He doesn't still have a page, does he?
Ah, he probably does.
He does, but you can.
He does.
You know when Ted called, it was nine oh one, because that's when free, you know, little.
Oh, yeah.
And then, and he called if you were at home on Sunday evening, it was thirty minutes.
Right, yeah. I say we leave it there.
Yes, fine, okay.
Okay.
So, roll call.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Thank you, Scott and Jessica, for doing that. Appreciate it. Okay, now we need approval of the meeting schedule for 2020.
Salute.
Second.
Move by Jessica, second by Ryan. Roll call.
Mr. Ballard.
Yes.
Mr. Bledsoe.
Yes.
Ms. Chambers.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Quakenbush.
Yes.
Before we get to election of officers for 2020, Mrs. Patterson's asked me to clarify something at budget time, to make final adjustments on the transfers, whatever, where there might have been a typographical or whatever, she was given the authority through the auditor's office to make everything right for the 2020 final budget.
All the A's and B's you've done since the book was, you know, printed, so through today's meeting, all those adjustments will have to be made.
But what I.
But no new people.
No new people. We didn't give her the authority to approve any new hires. After the first of the year, everything goes back to past practice, and we've done this each year for several years. You have to go through personnel, human resources, whatever you want to call it, and do your hiring, transfers, according to procedure. I just want to point that out. Now, I would like to.
With the exception of working season.
Well, that's true, yeah. That's, that's in a resolution. That's all the focus. Okay.
So do you need any action on that?
No, I just wanted to make it clear, because Donna, she, she, she takes a lot of responsibility, and sometimes she just needs a little backup, so she's.
And I know we've got some, like, new people coming in off the street the first year, and I just wanted to be clarified that we can't do that, to wait till the end of the year.
Okay. Now, I'd like to open the floor for election of council officers. First, we'll elect a president. This will be effective January the first, 2020. Do I hear any motions for president?
Mr. President, I'd like to nominate Scott Alexander as our president.
Second.
Motion by Jessica, second by Ryan. Do I hear any other motions? Do I hear a motion that nominations are closed?
Salute.
Second.
Nominations are closed. All those in favor of Scott Alexander for president 2020, please say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Now I need a vice president.
I'd like to make nomination for Jessica Piper for vice president of county council.
Second.
Second by Larry and Ryan. Any other nominations? You want to be that, John Mayer? Aye.
All nominations are closed.
Thank you.
Second.
All those in favor of Jessica Piper as vice president for 2020, vice president? Aye. Okay, with that.
I have one other thing real quick I'd like to say before we close out. Ron, on behalf of county council, we would like to present you with the president's award for outstanding service to Delaware County.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, that's beautiful.
But I'm sure you'll have a few words.
No, I don't have any. Thank you very much. I'm not leaving you, though, I'm going to be here for a couple more years. But thank you for the recognition. Scott's been a lot of help to me, Jessica, and Mary, and everybody along the way this last three years, and I, I've been on the council for, I think, seventeen years, mostly as a minority member, and have always enjoyed it and still enjoy it. Being president was a little more alone than I realized when I got into it, and good luck to you guys, and it's a responsibility. It's, 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 it's a good way, though, to serve your community, and still, we do good, stipend for it, we get paid, so can't take that away.
I appreciate it, Ron.
Thank you, Larry.
I wanted to ask something. We got a large crowd here, and I know we hadn't anticipated, but could I have five minutes to address, and then maybe Nate, so we can clear this up?
It's okay with me.
Does anybody else object?
Anybody object? Mayor speaking.
No. The, I understand, welcome everybody to our council meeting, feel free to always come back, they're as boring as this every day, forever. Reason why I think most of us are, most of you are here, and a lot of this was on an idea back in 2018, and please, anybody, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm going by how I was presented by this and how we did in our last two budget meetings. Back in 2018, about spring, Nate and Ralph Smith approached, I think, each, everybody on the council about a veterans' education officer grant being defunded because they weren't able to, they didn't make the grant, whatever that, they didn't get a grant for what Ralph was doing at that time. Ralph was not under our authority whatsoever as far as any kind of monetary values or anything like that, he just assisted Nate in that position. At that time, it was brought up to that it was going to be another four years before they could apply for this grant again. And at that time, we got into the budget hearings in September of 2018 for this year, 2019. A lot of discussions with the commissioners about how, how we fund something, how could we help out as a government entity? At that time, the commissioners had agreed to pay for it, one out of their contractual expect, contractual line item out of county general fund or their edit funds, there's two different funds there. Going into the 2018, September 2018, on our, one late evening, we were getting ready to finalize the budget, it was nowhere near in our radar to put it in the county general tax for their salary line item. And it was brought to our attention in the hallway that Ralph was short four, four months for his per. The only way that an employee could get his four months would be to actually be an employee. A contractual employee would not have worked at that time. On error, call an error, call what you want to, this is council, the idea, I come up the idea in the hallway, I brought it in here and made a motion in order for Ralph to get, it was a one-time, one-year for 2019, for Ralph to be an employee for one year, knowing that he was not going to apply for the benefits, because benefits on a thirty thousand dollar job could, a family plan could add another thirty, thirty-five thousand in another line item of another budget with per and all that other stuff, so it morphs into a lot of money that, you know, the council wasn't prepared for. Ralph and Nate, again, said that there's no way Ralph does not need the benefits, so we knew it was a flat thirty thousand. We erred on compassion to help a man get his four months for his per. Coming back into 2019's budget for 2020, back this past spring, I know a lot of us had communications with the commissioners individually and some together in our meetings about, there was negotiations going between the commissioners and chief, or president of Murns Ball State about help funding a position such as Ralph's to continue that on, because this was a one-year deal. The meeting that we were all told was going to take someplace sometime in the fall. Well, here we are in September again this year, and I got a text from James and a lot of communications, you know, because when we're dealing with budget, we, we deal with all aspects of one line item can affect a lot of other line items, so, you know, we're, and I have to say, if you've never been to a council meeting, county council, we have fun up here, we get down to our problems, we like, we, we do bump occasionally, but it's all in a professional means, but we're always concerned about keeping this county in, in a good financial condition. The, the negotiations with commissioners and the Ball State had not yet happened, and text James King out in the hallway, and I think I had conversations with everybody and all of us here, that James said, go ahead and just, if you're going to eliminate, eliminate it, or put whatever you can in part-time. Well, from a, from a standpoint of being compassionate about, if there's negotiations going to happen between the set of commissioners and the president of Ball State, maybe we just leave it the way it is, because if we defund something that somebody's not aware of why we done it, or why we might have taken something from full-time to a part-time, it just doesn't look good to ask somebody from a university to say, hey, can you help fund this, but fund what? It's not there no more. So, again, out of nothing but trying to help the Veterans Service Department and, and the negotiations with the executive of this county, which we have no, nothing to say in that, we're numbers people, just, we'll just let it go for 2020, and at the time, Ralph and Nate both said, again, no benefits, no nothing, and that's, that's what happened with the reason why it was funded, one more year out of county general tax money, your property tax money. So then we get it to a point where Ralph's retiring. Now, and please, anybody on the council, correct me if I'm wrong, the, the Veterans Service Office, it runs on the purview of the commissioners. There was a little bit of miscommunication or whatever about somebody might have interpreted, I don't want to get into who said, he said, but there was a disagreement or something that the line item was just going to be pulled out first year. Well, that, that does, that does lie within this authority i- if it's not going to be filled. We were running into the end of the year, again, the, in November's meeting, it was put on a transfer so that Nate could go ahead and hire. The problem was, at that time, was why have these discussions when they were meeting with President Murns December fourth? This is like, if we do something the last Tuesday of November, whatever our meeting was, I don't know what that date, it was preceded, it was before the meeting, so we, again, we didn't want to have any kind of sort of discussion, because why, why create any kind of turmoil and ruin our discussion? So today, we're here, and I know a lot of you are here, we have done nothing but tried to, whatever communication disagreement there were, I think, I've, I've had more phone calls, and I think everybody has several hours of phone calls over this, and again, it's just, it's just, how we got here is just like I told you. There's no promises anything beyond 2020, but, I mean, as of now, the commissioners, and, and again, I guess somebody was on the impression that there was going to be a transfer today, it wasn't on our agenda, and I know, when I talked to Scott, and you talked to Shannon Henry, and I talked to James King all separately, they were all saying, well, just put it in part-time. And Nate, I think, said, you know, yeah, well, I'll allow you to speak here and just say, the, to put it in part-time, he said, hey, I can, I can hire two for 2020 and help do whatever we need it to in 2020. And that's, that's all we were, have discussed, and I know that's been the wishes of about everybody, I mean, I, me personally, I don't care, leave it full-time, whatever, 2020, you got thirty thousand, if you want one person, I, I personally, just, I don't care, because it's in there right now as a salary. However, the caring part comes, is if there's a hire that comes in and needs benefits, the commissioners are going to suffer it out of either line item in their budget, because they're going to have to absorb that cost. We're not, we can't, nor will we, ask for an additional appropriation from the state since we've already went over and they've cut us, so you've got to understand the monetary value of that aspect. So Nate, I mean, where we're at is, it can either be moved into part-time, if the commissioners so do request, and I think by verbal, they have, or leave it at thirty thousand and do whatever. And anybody, please correct me if I've missed or stood anything.
I think you're spot on, to be honest with you, exactly how it went. And honestly, the reason that we raised concern about some of this was, in the process of all this, last August. Nate Jones, Delaware County Veterans Affairs Officer, the, the reason that, that there was a little bit of concern was because in August, we, we assumed, hey, this thing was going away. We, we assumed it. So when it was re-approved and, and a new deal had been made, we, we just thought, okay, hey, this, this is a great thing for, for our veterans of this community. And I can tell you that there's quite a few in this room right now that, that benefit from, from this service, and there's more definitely outside of the room. So when we get into the end of the year, my assumption, and, and only because of what was passed, was that, hey, we're going to be able to hire a new guy when Ralph retires. So when I get, I, I found out that there were some things possibly going to be getting moved. I had spoken with Scott Alexander in regards to this, I had spoken with Commissioner Henry, Commissioner King about this, and we were told that it was just going to be taken away, like that was just the, the floating rumor, so to speak. And what that does is that puts us in a situation to ramp this program down in less than three weeks, which is not a service to the veterans. And so when we started communicating about it all, I am in agreeance that if we can keep part-time money there, that will at least allow us to, over the next year, ramp that down the proper way and, and make sure that if Ball State decides to pick it up, great, they take it over, if not, we understand next year, you guys may yank us away because it doesn't make sense financially for the county, but at least that it gives us additional avenues to go and try to assist these veterans with, with the school that they've earned. And you've got to understand that the VA system is a very delegate, delicate program, and it's hard to navigate, very, very hard to navigate. And so I would invite each and every one of you council members, I know Councilman Ballard is going to be coming tomorrow, I apologize, Ryan. Yeah, I know, right? He's going to be coming up tomorrow and spending the day with us, and he just doesn't know it, but he's going to be all around this county tomorrow, and I think he'll get a good taste of what we do in that office, how we operate, and some of the benefits that we bring to the veterans here locally. The other thing I wanted to, to reiterate is, is the value that that brings to this county. I don't think that people realize the amount of federal tax dollars that are brought right here to this county because of what we do out of that office. And mark my word, about eighty percent of that money is spent right here locally in Delaware County, which benefits this, this body right here. So I thank you all for, for being cordial during this process, I thank you all for being positive. I would tell you, I think it was a misunderstanding as, as far as communication, we're not here to, to, to raise a bunch of cane, we're here to, really to see what we can do, we have some American Legion folks that are willing to lend a hand and try to help us find a way to make this work. You know, even if President Murns from Ball State doesn't do this, we have other avenues that, that we're still exploring, but we're trying to do that in a systematic approach that makes sense for, for us here locally, so.
And on, on that conversation, and the conversation I have James King, I don't know if you did, Shannon, Scott, was, I believe it was two days ago, about, everybody's on board with the part-time, and, and after those phone conversations, I called Jenny, I said, Jenny, make sure you ask commissioners to make sure, put it on a transfer agenda, I, I assume I meant January, because we'd already went past the deadline for this meeting, if that's indeed what they want to do. James called me right after that, and he did state, he goes, yeah, he can, they would look at their part-time monies now, I don't know what their balance is, I've not looked, he said he would help you.
We brand new.
Well, I know, but between now and the end of the year, that.
Oh.
James said he could utilize what they have in their part-time monies now to go ahead and allow you to hire now, and then a transfer in January into the part-time is just a flow of monies. Again, I don't know what they have, Jenny, you might, might have more of an idea.
If we, if we have to, to bite that bullet for a temporary moment, obviously, we're going to have to, that's just the way this works, I get that. What I don't want to do, though, is, is I don't want it to be two, three, four months down the road, and then all of a sudden, I'm still anticipating something happening, and then all of a sudden, I'm, I'm left to pick up the, the pieces from what Ralph's been doing, along with some of our work studies which help with this. And keep in mind, guys, that, you know, a lot of our hours in Delaware County VA office is paid for by federal dollars, not by this body right here. And, and look, at the end of the day, we're just trying to do what's right for the, for the veterans of this community. I can tell you that these guys go out and risk life and limb to, to make sure that all of us are able to sit up here and do what we do. The least that we can do is try to work for them and to give them what they've earned. And, and the way to do that is to, I think, bite.
And I think we've done that.
Absolutely, absolutely.
But they try to, again, it's just a monetary thing, is what it is, and, and if, if the, if the executive wants to in 2021, you know, they have that right, if they want to put it in their county, they could take a contractual employee out of their three eleven or their edit project five and pay for a contract employee, and, and never miss a beat. Again, that's on them, if they want to reduce that in their budget line item, I mean, that's our.
Back at that time, that's where Ralph, his position was, is out of contractual services. Larry, you explained it really well. It was never a thought or an intention, number one, to even bring it up or discuss it at this meeting, but never thought to eliminate funding in, whatever got put out on social media, my opinion, was dead wrong.
Yeah, so this is the thing, keep in mind, I'm the VA office, I don't know what that guy or any of those guys were talking about, I can tell you that our intentions today was to come, number one, and thank you guys for what you've done. You didn't have to do it. You didn't have to do it a year ago or two years ago. The idea, though, is to make sure that we transitioned this the proper way, rather than just, hey, we're not going to take away, and then you're left to pick up the pieces. And I know that you guys aren't doing that, so.
Yeah, that's what we've been working through and are continuing to work through, but I expect that this is going to be, my guess is it's going to be taken care of in January, but I think, you've talked to James.
James said, look, if you had part-time money, you could start tomorrow. I mean, that's, that's up to that budget, if not, you're just shy three weeks. I mean, and again, that's all that says, is you could go next week, I don't know, you know, that's up to, because James did tell me.
And I'll discuss that with them. What they say is what they say, it is what it is, so.
Right, and like I say, it's just nothing's, nothing's changing for 2020, other than maybe, you know, if you get two employees out of part-time monies versus one.
That might even be better.
You know, you know, I mean, you know, all we're here is to help what we can and always have.
Absolutely.
You know, so.
I just want to make sure you guys know that my goal today was not to raise chaos or anything of that nature. My goal today was to say, hey, look, we've got people willing to partner with us in our community, not only you guys, but other folks, and we thought that this was going to get brought up this, this meeting, we were told that by other individuals, and so we just wanted to be prepared for that. We wanted to be able to be prepared to say, hey, this is what we, we might be able to do on our end. And I still think those talks need to happen.
They do, and, you know, I want to go back to, and I know, we all talk on the phone, these meetings are a formality. We don't meet all as a group, but we call each other and run things off our heads, and it's a, you know, I'm proud, proud of every one of them, you know, because we.
We're a good team.
We're a good team, we tend to, we'll bicker on the phone, I mean, we don't always agree, there's no question. Larry and I still talk for two hours on the phone. Yeah, but you wouldn't know that we're here, I mean, we'll have our conversation for a five-minute meeting, but, you know, even back this last council meeting, we had the discussions about the 30,000 long before our September budget hearings. It's just where we got into the hearings, then they said, hey, we're meeting with the President of Ball State. We took it upon ourselves, said, well, let's just not wrinkle a quilt real quick.
Have to break some of them.
You know, and just, okay, we'll do this one more year so we can maybe help those negotiations with future funding, that's all we've done. You know, and when we go into the budget hearings, again, we're always calling department heads, hey, what are you doing in May or June? What's going on in September? You know, you got this, what are we going to do? I mean, it's a, it's a, it's a very good process, and it works. You know, it's just, there's a lot of, I even get confused on funding, and I've been doing this for 11 years, you know, what pays for what, and, but it's, I wish everybody knew, because then everybody could think, yeah, it makes sense, you know, because when you don't know, you're just listening to, and you go, that's stupid. But it really, it's just the way we're set up by statute, so everything's paid out of the way it needs to be paid. And again, I think we're all good here, I think we're all on the same.
I just think there was a miscommunication there, and so I think everybody was trying to figure out what was going on, and, look, at the end of the day, the commissioners, I report to the commissioners, they really are the ones that do my funding, and me and Ron have talked about that in the past. It's really not my job to come up here and do it, it's their job, so, but I do want to express the gratitude and the thanks to you guys for at least giving us some consideration and understanding that we're just trying to do good for these guys, that's all we're trying to do.
I don't think we discount what you do at all, right? And that's why we've been, you know, trying to do the best to work with you, because we realize what value it brings to our veterans, and we understand how important they are to our community, so it's definitely, we don't discount that role at all, it's just...
Difficult, I get it. Difficult money decision, you guys have a lot of decisions to make, I get it.
So all we're going to be doing next month is whatever, you know, move it part-time or leave it. I mean, that's, you know, and that's, it's the same, one versus two or three, whatever you can get out of part-time. And that, again, that's up to his boss to get on our agenda to do that, so. Hope that helped out. Again, again, Ron, I want to tell you, like I say, I appreciate everything you've done leading this last couple of years, and the budget hearings and everything, you're moving along really well. Looking forward to arguing with you, yes.
I, quite honestly, I've received no phone calls about this issue except from Scott. Scott's kept me pretty much informed, but nobody's called me, complained or whatever, but in all due respect, when we did budget hearings, we had no idea that Ralph Smith was going to retire. And the budget request was for part-time money, and we put it in full-time, and you had a funny look on your face that day, and I couldn't figure out what was going on in your mind, I guess.
Ralph Smith didn't know that he was going to retire either.
Well, but the thing is.
Until 6th November.
That's fine, but there again, that probably would have been a part-time item for 2020 if we had known that you were going to retire. So that's where the whole thing.
I didn't have a crystal ball to tell me what that November 6th was going to be.
No problem, sir. But I was at your retirement announcement, and I was so impressed that I felt kind of mixed emotions, because there I had voted to create that salary for Mr. Smith, our local hero.
And if I could just have him on my way out.
You go right ahead.
First off, I'm grateful for what you did, establishing this position for, initially. I'm thankful that you continued it on for next year. And I say I'm thankful for every, for myself and every one of the veterans that are in this room here. This is, this is where we're at, though. I give credit to the county commissioners every time I get a chance to speak. But I've let you down and not give you credit where credit is due, because it's an entire team. It's not just them, it's not just the VA, it's also the council. I appreciate you providing the funds, the money. What that does, it allows Nate the appropriate manpower and the appropriate materiel, to use a military term, supplies and equipment, to have built, and I've traveled this state and looked at other offices. Because of your support and the support from the county commissioners, that has allowed him to build, and I say this often, it's almost like, gosh, it's the best, most productive county service office in this state.
Amen.
Yeah, that was up to the law. I say that often, but it's, it's actually true. And he couldn't do that without the support of his bosses and without your support. So I wanted to, on my way out, of a long career, dealing with the military and with veterans, my entire life, I joined the Air Force when I was 17. My mother, who has passed, had the sign for me, she didn't want to do that. At that time, they still have to today. That was in May of 1976, and I've been in the military, going to school under the GI Bill, or working to serve veterans since May 28th of 1976. Bringing that forward to this day, that was my induction, this is my departure. I ask you to continue the support of money, manpower, and materiel to Nate and his team. And one last thing, give this man a raise, because he deserves it. So, thank you, I appreciate the support.
And one other thing that I would comment about is that by this being part-time, it could spread it out among several assistants and let some of the other folks learn what you're doing and create more access to that office.
Those that work in the Delaware County Veterans Affairs Office, please stand up.
These are volunteers, right?
No, these are work studies. Going to school, Greg, you were a work study.
Seventy-eight thousand dollars.
The others stand up.
The one standing up, seventy-eight thousand.
We have trained our replacements, that's what we do in the military, we train our replacements. These people have been trained already to replace me. So however Nate decides to move this forward, I know he'll do.
Please interview the commissioner.
He'll do a, he'll do a bang-up job without any grenades.
Sounds fantastic.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to say something.
Would you state your name for the record?
My name is Jerry Alexander, I'm the Regional Director for U.S. Senator Braun, and I was invited.
There's no ID, sir.
Big pardon?
There's a lift that we started on.
Okay, all right. The, anyway, the, I was made aware by an email from our office that this meeting was happening, and they had asked me to speak in favor of supporting the position, only because I travel 16 counties, and I have, I deal with 16 VSOs, and we have nine Regional Directors, and all of those Regional Directors are dealing with VSOs, and it's one thing to say that, that the Delaware County VSO is doing a great job, but it's another thing to be in a position of working for 16 different VSOs and coming to the conclusion that the investment that Delaware County has made in the Veteran Service Office has created a lot more than, than you realize in terms of veterans that receive benefits. When veterans receive benefits and they're out there, and they're identified and located, which this VSO office is doing considerably better than any of the other VSO offices that I, that I've worked with in the state. The small amount of money that's being invested versus the extensive amount of return that Delaware County gets when veterans receive benefits, and the VA funnels that money to those veterans who end up spending it in Delaware County on a lot of other services, the investment's very small in comparison. But I just wanted to say that the Delaware County VSO's office is doing much better than any of the 16 counties that I work with, and it, it probably is not an exaggeration to say anywhere in the state of Indiana, and we deal with all of them, so I just wanted to speak in favor of the, the funding for the position.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Senator, thank you. Thank you. Okay, I guess we're ready to finish, but I want to introduce one person here this morning that came in that I didn't know was going to be here. That's the person that's been behind me during my political career, that's my wife, Phyllis. She's sitting back here on the side room. Should we stand, please?
Don't hide.
Stand up so they can see you. I can't see if you don't stand up. You've got to stand up.
Get up a little.
Come on, let's see.
Last thing, Ron said he made you, he was cleaning out some of his stuff, he says he will throw what he wants to throw away.
Thank you, Ron. I had no idea she'd go be here, she walked in. Thank you for coming, though, appreciate it. Cut me a nice plaque today. I think they're trying to get rid of me. That's, that's what they did when I retired from my business, they ran an ad in the Muncie newspaper, afraid I wouldn't, I'd change my mind again. Okay, with that, thank you, Larry, very much, for what you've done on this thing with the veterans. It seemed like it, as you say, things that are better done, that's what I like about being a public servant, is you can communicate in a transparent way. I don't like this stuff behind the scenes and all that.
Well, most generally, what I've learned is, a lot of frustration comes from misunderstandings or false information.
Misinformation, absolutely.
And, like I said, I've been in the Air Force, so anything I got problem, I think it causes male pattern baldness. But, Ralph? Again, I hope everybody's clear on this now, and wish everybody happy holidays. I motion to adjourn.
Second?
I have a motion to adjourn, with a vote in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All seen, signed.